Then. United States of America and to the Republic of Brazil stands. On the mission. And this is well.
Thank you, everyone, for attending tonight. All right, so we do have a quorum tonight. Before I call for other business, couple housekeeping topics. One, I want everybody to know the meetings are being recorded. Just want to make sure that that's out there. Also, make sure that everybody knows proper etiquette. When we get to the point where we ask for public comment on agenda items, it's agenda items only. And we are going to be tightening the belt on the three-minute window of public input at the end as well. That being said, I will go ahead and call for other business. All right, no other business. I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
Motion for approval of the consent agenda.
A second.
Then move by Kathy and seconded by Rebecca.
I'm saying.
Any discussion on those?
I'd like it confirmed that there are not yet three signatures. And they're not fully reviewed.
There is.
One of these invalid.
There's three signatures, which is finishing the file.
She signed before we. I'm just making part of the record.
Yes. Um, any further? All right, I will go and call for a vote. All votes in favor.
All right.
Oppose. All right, we will move right on down into department reports. We don't see Chief here yet. We'll catch up with him when.
Yeah, I've got his, I've got his report. It looks like we had twenty-six calls this month. Three agency assist, one alarm, one animal. One burglary, one fraud, one, two harassment, seven informational. One burglary, two juvenile, one shoplifting, one suspicious vehicle. Two traffics and a warrant was served.
Well, so we will go ahead and move on to city hall.
Um, civic plus update. We are currently in a legal review. Um, the next process is going to be meeting with the attorneys. It's probably going to take a couple months from here. And we've got some more progress on some residences. Um, we had a dumpster delivered out to one. Um, several vehicles have been picked up. The campers are gone. And the Maple Street subdivision has officially been reported, so Kurt's probably going to come in to pull permits soon. Um, he did already pay for his water sewer hookups, so that was nice. Um, and I need the W four is turned in from all employees and council members. And then Carly's training of Sarah, so she's been working with Sarah, focusing on utility processes. Sarah's making strong progress, effective, using notes that Carly has provided. Her understanding and management of utility-related tasks continues to improve.
Did Kurt pay for those water hookups this year or last year?
He paid for them at the very end of last year. But we got them in this year's revenue. Great.
And that dumpster, who's paying for that?
They are.
Any other council questions for Rachel? All right, perfect. We will move into public works.
Hello, everyone. I'm Public Works Assistant Jay Crow. Um, I provided a couple of different things, but I'll just get started with what we've been doing the past couple of weeks. As far as our daily procedures and testing goes, that was performed without any issues. We finally made it down to the park to clean up the windblown damage. Uh, the larger chunks that required heavy equipment was the task of Public Works, and now all that's left is just small rims for the park coast to clean when he has the time. We have to dump trailer down there now. Uh, we filled several potholes around the town, including the city-owned portion of the gravel road at the end of First Street. South First Street, excuse me, behind the parts store and city hall over here. Um, and the new public, not new, but the public parking space, that's an extension of Third Street. Uh, we've been doing our weekly I-Works trainings now, so we're kind of getting immersed into the system and finally implementing stuff into it. Um, John met with Mary Harold to discuss upcoming park comp plan. Um, I know she had a few questions for the Public Works Department. Before the large dumpster was placed there, we hauled off two dumpster loads of garbage from the Maggert property. And we've just kind of been checking all of our allergic equipment, firing them up, making sure everything's running smoothly and checking fluid levels. I've got a couple of other things that I wanted to note that I didn't actually got to include in the printed portion here. I just wanted to inform the public that we put a little blue box outside of the wastewater treatment facility to serve as a suggestion box. We just want to be able to serve the public as best we can, and any project suggestions or whatever you guys have for us would be greatly appreciated. It's kind of tacky right now, but some of us, we might clean that up a little bit. Um, and then I had a couple things that I wanted to bring to you guys' attention, and it may be traffic control, law enforcement, um, stuff. We did the school signs in the past few few weeks ago, uh, changing them from the flashing lights to the, uh, signs that had timeframes on them. There is actually one more school sign left with a light. And but we're not sure if it's, uh, necessary, because it's kind of, it was put there before the Sixth Street was changed to a one-way. So it's kind of facing where nobody would be driving. So we're not sure that we kind of wanted to bring it to the PD attention, but I see Chief isn't here today.
Yeah, we heard a bunch of sirens take off. I don't know if they had a call or.
There's an accident on my.
So, yeah, and then it was just that, and maybe addressing the blind spot from, uh, if that's going to be used as public parking, we're not sure if it'd be a liability to the city. Just some thoughts we had. Um, it's kind of a blind corner there. Um, other than that, we, um, from my class with the, uh, uh, the Water Distribution Management Class, uh, I was able to do a, um, Evergreen Rural Water Representative, and he brought to my attention that some of our local cities are doing a water sewer apprenticeship programs with, uh, local high school. And, um, he spoke to me about that. I've been working with Rachel. Um, I think she has yet to contact him back. We're just kind of, kind of trying to collect information on what that might look like. I know, um, it seems like Napa Vine is, uh, kind of a forefront leader of that. It's a brand-new program. And they're, uh, they're kind of proposing taking a high school kid, because there's one particular one interested from Naperville School District that, um, they'd take them for like an hour in the mornings through their daily routines, just to kind of get them immersed in the program. Yeah, water treatment plant operators and water distribution managers are kind of a dying breed, especially in this area. So it's kind of this way we can get back to the community. And then addressing the fire hydrants, I know you mentioned that, uh, maintenance. Uh, we actually just were able to speak a little bit with the fire chief today. We're going to be moving forward, trying to look together.
I was hoping maybe you could turn that into an inning or something. Good. That's welcome.
So, yeah, other than that, I provided you guys with some public work certifications, a big old thing. Uh, I just wanted to kind of throw some clarification out there, some information on the, uh, certifications surrounding our field and just, uh, facts with that. I know I wasn't last, here last time to address that. I know it was kind of taken up in conversation, but, um, uh, just to go over some of them. Uh, our classifications here, we require a wastewater treatment plant operator, two, a water distribution manager, two, and a cross-control specialist. So, uh, John actually had those certifications. Wastewater Treatment Plant Operator and Water Distribution Manager, we have to have in-house, and a cross-control specialist. Uh, we can technically have a contracted one, but John has that certification. So another relevant one that we don't have, but we actually contract out, is a BAT, a Backflow Assembly Tester. That kind of goes along with the cross-control specialist. It's a, um, somebody who actually tests the apparatuses, the CCS. Yeah, CCS. I don't think there's much experience required. You just kind of take a class and pass the test. Um, yeah, and you guys, you guys can I don't know if you guys have any questions on it. I just wanted to kind of clarify some highlighting information.
Yeah, there, when I lived in a larger city in the past, they did backflow test. You're required to do backflow testing. So I was wondering, maybe that's something we
Currently, I think they have like eleven or twelve things in our city that we own, so that would be what we test.
I guess this is at the residential level.
Yeah, so the residence is the residence responsibility. Some residents are required to have backflow prevention. Cross connection is a whole can of worms and a whole different thing. You'd think it'd be like right there with water and.
Did we want one huge thank you to taking care of those potholes, because they were getting to be a little, um, dangerous? Um, and I kind of would love to hear, I know it's been, you haven't been in it that long, but feedback on the I-Works.
Um, it's definitely, it's user-friendly. Um, we're finding that the trainings with, they have a I don't know how long it is, but they've been doing once a week training sessions. They usually last about three minutes to forty-five minutes, so it's been easy to fit into our morning schedule. They teach you a lot. They go over things thoroughly, so some of the stuff's like, okay, we get it, but it's, it's been helpful. Um, I can definitely see the advantages of having it as a platform.
I guess.
But, yeah, that's, that's what I.
Right, we have to uh, get it fully implemented, but we're working on it. We're, we've got some stuff in there already, and we've just been kind of playing around with what it has. We just completed our training for the, uh, work management side of things, so this next week, we're moving into the wastewater treatment plant facilities. Uh, to just, that was a little more confusing, so it'll be helpful to have us train.
Thank you. So one issue we had with, um, the water meter replacement, it was all about communication. I mean, it really was, but it didn't go so bad, but we just had no idea, because it was month after month after month, working on it, working on it, working on it. It might be great for you, and I, I hesitate just to, you know, put you on some kind of a, but I'm watching too many politics, um, to put you on some kind of a, you know, a number scheduled thing. But it would be fantastic if you started thinking about that, so that you could come pat yourself on the back in front of us and say, we got two hundred and forty-three things in, or we got this whole, this room that, you know, so that it kind of shows that we're having progress. I understand you have a million things that need.
We're talking about with the I-Works program?
Yep. So it'd be kind of nice to, you know, get yourself on a plan, and maybe you'll have an idea for, you know, what it, what it'll be, because as you pointed out in, in one of the studies that, that we had, you have a lot of just, just motors, just motors themselves, and, and.
I will say, we, we do have a lot of large equipment in there, so anything that drives down the road, we have it in there, and we have all the information.
Yeah, it's going to start to pay off when you have all the motors in there, and you have all the
Right.
everything that you turn, you know, that is like, how is it functioning? When's it going to need to be replaced?
Yeah.
That's awesome. Look forward to that.
On the, uh, apprenticeship, is that something you're going to pursue, or is Rachel?
You guys want me to pursue it? I can. I kind of wanted to even know your guys' input on it. It's.
I think it sounds like a great idea, and if you check with the Sweet Gabe and Apprenticeship Certification Program.
Well, this would be, that's what they're doing. It's.
That, well, it, it might provide you with input on how to implement it.
Well, I'm, from speaking with, uh, the guy named Erwell, his name is Ernie, I believe, Clyde Mac, but I don't want to mispronounce his name. So, um, he kind of made it seem like Erwell is taking everything. They just, they just need utilities to implement it, because really, the, the program itself is not the hands-on stuff. There'll be, it's kind of like CTE credits in high school. They'll be teaching them in a classroom setting. They'll be going through all the kind of the stuff that I just went through at this class, but, you know, more extensive. And, um, they just want a couple utilities in the local area to be able to sort it out for a little bit, and so they can actually apply. They can see what the thing looks like in real life, so it really made it seem like, um.
There's not much we have to do.
Right.
Exactly. It's just kind of supporting them and a, a place for them to have hands on.
Right. We just have to make sure insurance covers it and all that, so.
I, it's definitely something I would like to see us do. I think it would encourage some of the, the newer upcoming generations to hopefully try and get in on the ground floor here and work.
Yeah. I always joke with John about it, but like I just wastewater treatment was not even a thing I thought about. I just thought it disappeared after flushing down toilets. Not really, but I mean, that's kind of.
It's just gone.
Outside of mine, yeah, that's right. So I think just getting it out there and, you know, teaching younger generations would.
I think taking more than one is important, too, because maybe that one that you take learns something, but then goes, yeah, this isn't really for me, whereas if you do two or three, somebody, it's going to gel with somebody. Yeah, one might.
Well, it sounds like this organization has, uh, brought in several.
Yeah.
Yes.
And they're, they're just looking for facilities they can send their students out to, to get hands on.
Yeah.
Also, not necessarily our local.
Um, I think just for practicality, it would probably be Toledo and the Naperville kind of area, but, uh.
So they're not traveling so far.
Like I said, this is brand new, like, it wasn't to me, hey, that's something, I'm not, I'm sure they've done a run of their late work already, but um, I think this year, they're going to try to work on implementing it, and, uh, it would be brand new from their side of things anyway.
It'd be great to have, uh, someone local be excited about staying local and.
Right.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Starting from the bottom and learning.
And I, I think, uh, I mentioned Naperville was doing that like one hour in the morning, and I think they did some sort of, I don't know if it was a formal contract or if they're I remember him mentioning they were going to hire him on as a summer help in the summer, so that would be another way to keep them implemented in the process.
That would be wonderful.
So it would be nice to get some specifics
Yeah.
in front of the council, so that.
Right, and I just wanted to present the idea to you guys and with them over the next few weeks on what the details might look like. Any other questions for me?
Thank you, Jay.
That's cute.
Absolutely. All right, so we will jump on into council reports. Um, just, you know, kind of in same thing, driving through town, making sure how, or the properties that we've had that we're watching or making progress, and most of them are. There is a handful that, um, are going to be receiving some letters. Um, but all in all, it seems as though most people are paying attention and taking notice that we are making this town start cleaning up, which is wonderful. Um, other than that, just kind of keeping up to date with what's going on through the AWC since, uh, daily updates about legislative session and all the fun stuff going there, so just kind of keeping up with that, but other than that, nothing new for me. We will go ahead and you have anything for us, Tony?
Um, I did, uh, receive notification. I'm not sure if I went to everybody, that Ross McCall did retire, uh, from the county um, from emergency management, and I'm happy to see that they did get that position, Erica, so I think that was a really good uh, decision on their part, and she already has been in that department for a while, so I was happy to see that. And I'll be, um, going to his retirement party, since I worked with him for many, many years. So that, that's all I have.
I don't have anything to report.
Well, I can report that I attended the first budgetary meeting tonight along with my cohorts here.
That's it?
Well, yeah, I was here, too.
Yes, she was.
And I got two sessions, uh, two, two of the training things done this week.
You pretty much caught it. Most of council had their stuff done. It was hard wording.
It's, it's good to do refreshers anyway, but otherwise, nothing.
And I have.
All right. We'll go ahead and move into committee reports. Anything from planning tonight?
Uh, nothing new to report, other than the fact that I was doing a little bit of research on our shoreline management plan. And apparently, we did complete one in two thousand thirteen. And when I came into the Planning Commission in February in two thousand twenty, the two thousand twenty version was allegedly underway, and I have not been able to locate a copy of that anywhere. Uh, so I assume it got done, but I don't know. Um, and if it did get done, then we would be on the hook for the update to that plan of two thousand thirty. One of the things I did note that, uh, Riverway Parkway's are not included as part of the capital improvement plan required to be force, foretold in advance. So there are certain things that we can do along that river that don't require a change to the plan. But I'm still kind of looking at, I, I assume Graham Osborne completed that two thousand twenties, uh, report since they did the two thousand thirteen report.
I've laid eyes on it.
You have.
But it was, but it was just like two years ago.
Okay, and I'd like to get a copy of Planning Commission, so they can start reviewing it.
Your eyes. He's like, pointing them.
Um, Todd, you haven't seen one, have you?
I, I have not reviewed the shorelines plan. We did do a permit that I looked at it for a while back, um, but no, I haven't. I can, I can pull that from Department of Ecology's website. They have all the adopted shorelines plans there, the ones that have been approved by councils and also accepted by ecology.
That would be wonderful.
Uh, yeah.
I can commission next time.
Yeah, I can bring that to Planning Commission, um, next time, so you can see the status of the adopted plan. That won't be, it'll be an easy thing.
Very good. Uh, on the Planning Commission, uh, front, questions for, uh, our uh, Public Works Department is with regards to uh, the backflow prevention testing that's going on. I assume that contract is not very expensive, considering how few we have. Is that right?
Um, I don't know the details, but, yeah.
It would be nice to know that, so that we, we have an idea. You know, all commercial landscape has to be backflow prevented. And as we get into communities that are going to provide, uh, landscape irrigation for their own communities, such as Callens Meadow for the park, uh, the property that's adjacent to that when they, they develop. And certainly going into our UGA for any kind of commercial industrial development, which will require, um, associated landscaping. Those backflow preventers will be necessary, and so there's going to be a break-even time when we are going to be you know, looking at hiring somebody that that's part of their duties, um, do handle the backflow prevention, and they could certainly learn the other trick as well and take care of that, so. That's it for me. Any questions?
Thanks. All right.
I might, if, if I can have just a minute, I'd, I'd like to add a little bit more on there. Um, I presented to Planning Commission that at the last County Plan Growth Committee meeting, we discussed the evolution of the interlocal agreements that they're doing with different cities. Um, you might remember that we decided to pull out of that, uh, because the, uh, the interlocal agreement got extremely complicated with all the issues that the county needed to deal with in the bigger cities. And because we weren't asking for a large urban growth boundary expansion at this point, it really didn't mean as much to us to be able to control the permitting in our, in our UGA as it, as it would have if we would have gone for the bigger expansion. Um, so even though we pulled out of that discussion, it looks like that, um, that is evolving, uh, because the cities in the county are having, um, some issues coming to terms with agreement about road maintenance and some other things. Um, but one of the elements of that, that the county is pursuing, is the interlocal agreement, uh, for annexation, which is the new annexation method, which does not require, um, the, um, individual property owner's signature. Simply the city and the county agree on a methodology for annexation through a period of time in the growth of the city. And then the city is able to enact that, um, you know, basically at, at their will. Um, they still have to go through a public process, but it just lessens the burden of having, um, you may remember when we did the last annexation, there was quite a burden of um, collecting, um, the signatures from the property owners, getting those verified by the county, um, getting the county to, um, um, certify that we had the right percentage of the property owners. It, it, it's a large amount of process that we went through when all of the property owners were willing to annex, so um, this would make things like that a lot simpler, uh, because as long as it was um, identified as a phase of annexation, then the city could then just basically begin that process, and we could skip all the, all the voter registration search and tax property certification and all of those. So I, I think that's an item of interest, and I'll stay tuned, but I just wanted to take this opportunity to brief council on, on that portion of an ILA as it may come up in the future. So no action tonight, just informational.
Thank you, Todd. All right, so we will move on. Do we have anyone here from Park Board tonight? And next Park Board meeting is the second Tuesday. The next Tu, next Tuesday. So no public hearing tonight, no special presentation. Is there any public comment on our agenda items? All right, so we will go ahead and jump into new business. Um, first order of business is the impact fees, uh, school districts and parks discussion.
So, um, I was just to get some stuff together for this today, but I didn't, it didn't happen. Um, no, I sent Steve and Todd over the the minutes that were needed, those minutes, and I haven't even really run through them, but they should have shown um, the school district getting the it was like thirty or twenty-seven, right, Todd? Twenty-seven hundred approved?
I, I skimmed through the minutes, and I saw that they had approved the capital facilities plan, which has the, um, the smaller, it was less than, it was around three thousand bucks um, in the capital facilities plan. I didn't see that number in the minutes, but I might have missed it. I, I didn't read them carefully.
Well, but we've got the capital facilities plan, and that was approved, so it's that's what we need in, right?
Yes, I, so the two elements that we need to include their impact fees in our comp plan, um, we now have. We have proof that the board has adopted um, that capital facilities plan, and then and then, uh, we also have the capital facilities plan that was forwarded to us previously. So now we've got those two pieces, so we can, we can include those, and we can include their impact fees, and we can begin collecting them. If, if the school district is willing to accept them once we collect them, if we collect them and we can't give them to the school, that's going to be a financial, or it's going to be a, a counting nightmare for you, but.
Well, we won't even set up the ordinance until they've got their bank accounts set up.
Okay, okay, but now we can include it, um, and, and we can set us ourselves up to collect them.
Right.
Um, and then I guess.
We'll move forward when they're ready.
Then if you determine that it's, that we're not ready, then we can pause on actually collecting them.
I think they've already issued one letter, Todd, uh, indicating that they weren't ready to receive impact fee.
That was for Kurt, Steph.
That's what I meant.
Yeah, so that was back before, um, that was mid-December.
They're still retiring, just out of proper accounting channel.
Correct, so that, and that's why they couldn't, because Kurt was ready to pull permits. And I just needed a letter, so I think they're they want to collect impact fees, and the last I heard from Adam, who was the guy that came into planning, was that, um, Janay or someone in accounting would reach out to me, and that we could send an appointment with Chris and kind of sit down and all together figure out. I haven't heard from anybody, so I'm, I'm leaving it, you know, in their court. I think Adam's was going to come to our next planning meeting, so we'll just kind of go from there, but they, you know, they provided what we need, so we'll just move forward with it.
Did you have a fill-in number yet?
No, we had to pull it down. Well, yeah, we'll have to do another reading on it.
I haven't provided it, but they scheduled it, but we do have a plan and everything in place.
And the school is still intending to go, go for the county as well.
I told them that they needed to get with us, so that way we could schedule an appointment with the county. I that's, you know, hasn't been done.
Yeah, so I've got a meeting, actually, I have a study waiting with them on Wednesday.
With the school district?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so I can meet with them, start conversations, because I think our best approach is to get things in place here. It's a much easier for us to then bring the process and everything to the county, since it doesn't exist.
Yeah, who are you meeting with?
Take a lot of the mystery out of it, with Brennan, and then he's got somebody from his front office management that's going to join the conversation. I didn't get a name.
Okay, I was wondering.
Should it, Rachel, or?
Yeah, if you need me, let me know.
Sure.
Then she's going to be doing the accounting on it. She should probably.
I won't, though. I mean, it was more, I was more stepping in just to try to be of assistance. Um. I won't though. I mean, it was more, I was more stepping in just to try to be of assistance. Um. Chris and I kinda sat down and figured out a lot of it and then he was able to. Figure out what he needed to figure out. So I was just more getting involved with the school district to be like, hey, I've got information for you. Um, at this point, it's just them taking the steps forward to do what needs to be done. I'm here to help them. If they want help, if they don't want to use me, they can. Kind of figure it out with whoever they're they're working with or ask ask Chris. So they they know I'm here if they need my help, so.
Yeah, at this point, we're just offering the information so that they can make a decision of how.
Right.
Um, ta- take a lot of the mystery out of it and let them then decide, cuz we're just hoping that they do.
Right.
Yeah, come to the table, so.
And I I did just pull up the. Because I'm sitting here at my desk, I pulled up what we had for the capital facilities plan and it is two thousand. Seven hundred and eleven dollars per single family resident. And two thousand nine hundred sixty six dollars for multi-family residence. So that's what's currently in their plan.
Can you clarify about for me, cuz when you say multi-family and you have a higher number. Is that, let's say, an apartment building of four apartments, is that per apartment or one building?
Those are per resident, so they're per unit. So for a four, you'd do the four times twenty nine sixty six.
Okay, so our public will know that we have a ten-unit apartment. The impact fee for that would be closer to thirty nine thousand dollars. Or twenty nine thousand dollars.
That's odd.
Correct.
No, twenty nine hundred.
About twelve thousand.
But okay.
It is, it is odd and it's not characteristic to have it go that way. Usually the multi-family residences are lower. Um, so. But there is an appendix A that they have with the figures that they have that support all those. I know um at the time, uh Councilman Hayes was. Uh, asking them for that backup information when we were going through this previously. Um, but when council was discussing this last last year, maybe last January. Um, and the school district hadn't really provided us with any backup for um. For the numbers or the the backup that they provided. Um, I don't know, Councilman Hayes, do you recall if you ever received? Any of that information that you were requesting?
I just remember it was gonna be, no, just what they gave us originally. There wasn't, you're right, there wasn't very much to it. Other than a very large number.
But for us to adopt it, I don't know, I don't think, you know, I mean, other than maybe being accountable to. The citizens who would have to pay it. Um, I don't. I I think we have what we need in order to be able to adopt those fees. Um, but certainly, I think i- if council wants more information, it's good for you to let us know that as soon as you can. So that we can try to work with the school district and get the information that you need. Um, it is a discretionary thing for council. So you, I mean, even if we have the information, you do not have to adopt. A school district impact fee or or any impact fees. These are all um tools to be used if council wants to use them. Um, and even though the district might petition you to do that, it's it's your choice because the city is the only one with authority to collect them. So the schools can't impose them on their own, so so. It it seems to me that the school should be um. Should be more than willing to support this if this is something they want. They should be able to get you the information that you need to make an informed decision. The county has said that they will not adopt impact fees, but I think that is changing too. In our last plan growth committee meeting. Uh, you know, I know that Mindy Brooks, their new director of community development, had indicated that they were looking at impact fees. Um, for traffic and and schools. Um, so. Um, I know that they're. They're changing, um, at least at the staff level, they're changing their tone on impact fees. Before it was, no, we're not doing that. Um, pretty conclusively, and now they're actually considering it.
It might be a question to float with the city on a non-official or with the uh school district on a non-official basis as to. Is this really what you meant to do? Because my my experience is that multi-family homes can break versus the other way around. And even so, I doubt that we're gonna get any pushback from them because these are quite reasonable fees, I think, in in regards to comparisons of jurisdictions. Uh, in the surrounding areas that do collect impact fees. Uh, Ridgefield being a prime example.
Could be. Steve, it's a, it's a little, yeah, it's a little regressive and and I'd actually hate it, but it it doesn't focus very well, you know, if. It 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 feels like you're. You're just trying to discourage multi-family, which is completely the opposite of what we're hearing coming down from planning, you know, that. That they'd like to encourage it maybe more than we'd even like. But I'd hate for it to look like we're trying to discourage multi-family.
Off off record conversation.
Oh, I don't mind being wide open.
I'll reach out about it.
Yeah.
But, so it it does have to be formal, though. I mean, right now, they have it in their adopted capital facilities plan. So if they're going to reverse that, they would need to amend their capital facilities plan because that's what we will use. To a- adopt and and apply the impact fees. We have to have an adopted capital facilities plan from them. Um, we we don't need. Uh, only to the point that you that you feel that you need information to verify it, um, do we need information? Once it's adopted as their capital facilities plan, the presumption is that that as. Um, as a district operating within the state of Washington, they're doing so and they're and they're doing their own accounting and figuring it out on their side appropriately, so. We can question that, but we don't have to. Um, but it does have to be, in order for us to enforce it and and apply it, it has to be a part of. An adopted capital facilities plan, and now this is the one that seems to be in effect. So.
I I think that given their inexperience and having to ever deal with this. That it might be a good idea to bring it to their attention simply because they made. Taken, we didn't realize, they may not think, know that a ten-unit apartment building is now twenty nine thousand dollars. You know, they may be thinking it's two thousand nine hundred dollars.
Yeah.
And. Until you ask that question, you won't know.
Rachel can go ahead and reach out to them for clarification on that and we'll circle back around.
Okay.
Right, any further discussion on that? Anybody else have any questions?
And then parks, um, I just need, uh, Todd needed the go-ahead to start working on the comp plan for parks. Todd, do you have? An update on that? It shouldn't, I think we're just at the very end of it, right?
We are, I and I haven't really participated, you know, I um. So Mary's forwarded me drafts of it and I've glanced at sections and and seen the evolution of it. But I really haven't worked on it um much yet. It is an element of our of our uh comp plan for for capital facilities element and that too will need. Um, kind of that similar. That similar um plan. And I I'd be happy to help them out and um. And I've kinda communicated to that, but but I also haven't been working on it because the the items that. That I that are on on my scope um have have basically taken precedent over that. I'm trying to work through your other. Capital facilities element with uh with your city engineer and I'm trying to work through the comp plan with planning commission and we're making good progress. Um, but because this was sort of an extra task that wasn't part of my scope, it. It it split aside, so when Mary asked, well, what can we do to get it elevated in your scope, uh my. My answer was simple, it, well, communicate your need to Rachel and the mayor and council and. Um, if they make it a priority for me, it will become a priority. Uh, but until then, they've, you know, they've given me a scope. So I guess I'd just like to hear from you all. Um, what that will be and because it's not part of my scope, uh potentially it could change the budget at this point. I really don't know. I mean, we're still. We're still on track. Um. If I, if I can just kinda work it in and and get it done with the rest of it, then, you know, I may not need to change the budget. Uh, Rachel had asked, well, what could it cost? And I gave her some some rough idea of cost, um, a couple thousand bucks. A- and, but I don't know if I'll need that or not. It just depends on how the rest of the thing goes. If I get to the end of this and I'm running out of budget, well, maybe then I'll come back and I'll ask you all to extend my budget for for things like this, but. Um, but I'd like to, you know, I'd like to work it in. Um. And if i- if it's your direction, I will give it priority and and try to move that along faster. Um. So I just needed some guidance from council on on where this should fit into the grand scope and scheme of things. They are making fantastic progress. I've read the drafts and. It looks like it's it's missing a few things. It's still missing. Uh, some of the cost estimating and other things that need to be done. Um, and I don't know who will provide those. I cannot. I cannot provide those. I don't know what parks and equipment costs, but. That is kinda what they're missing now and then some fine tuning and maybe some of their uh support elements to make it um. To make it more defensible as an impact fee type document, but. But I I'd be happy to help them out. Um, either way, if it's a priority, then I'll make it one. Um, if not, then then I'll. I will get to it and I'll make sure that it's included at at the in the comp plan. But it still may be a little bit down the road.
That kinda stuff, we can do that in-house, can't we?
Given some education, I can probably help with it. But I don't know what's missing. Now, that's more directed at Todd than anything.
Well, I could ask you, Todd, if you've seen what they've got so far, do they have anything? In their uh comprehensive plan that deals with the nature preserve that we had intended. To construct along the Callis Meadows and general properties.
I I believe I I did see some elements of that in there. Um, it it in Google Docs and Mary had shared a. Um, a working document with me that. That I can bring up and I can look for that. Um, but I. But I do seem to remember um references to that as well as trail systems and other things, so.
I think you're talking about the Riverwalk Rock and with Riverwalk and Steve, you are correct, it doesn't conclude the Callis Meadow. Meadows. Aspect of a nature preserve.
Because they do, they do understand we're being needed a whole lot of land.
Right.
To.
Right, so um that's just an oversight, so that can be corrected, but I will get you a copy.
So we'll hold off on that then, we'll just kinda dig into it a little bit on our own.
They probably have another round to get to the point where they think they're done. And again, with maybe Todd educating me, um, maybe I can be of assistance.
Okay.
It's a little cheaper.
Alright. We'll reach out then, Todd, we'll we'll talk about it a little on Wednesday for uh planning after Steve has a chance to look at it and kinda see where we wanna go.
Yeah, yeah, that. That's fine, I, you know, this this came up and Mary asked, well, how do I, how do I get it?
Yeah.
How do I get it moved up in priority? And I I said, well, I'd love to work on it, but. Really, my priorities are set by, um, you know, under my contract, Rachel and the mayor, so that's. That's who you need to get to tell me to move faster on it.
Yeah, thanks, Todd.
So.
Alright, so I think we have put that one to bed for tonight. Um. We will go ahead and move down to the Public Works Department needs discussion.
This is a full-on PowerPoint presentation. I feel like I should be looking upon the screen.
Yeah, I did try to kind of this way just to be as appealing as possible. I just wanted to. Uh. Input this as a point of transparency on what we would like to see and what we think could be useful as to the point of the city. Um, you think there's just a. A lot of obligations in the Public Works Department and some of them are not being met. I mean, we're at a point where we kinda have to prioritize what's getting done, what's not, and um. Just more hands were never hurt. That's kinda the point of this and uh just presenting it in this way to uh. Maybe utilize the Budget Advisory Committee as a form of. Finding money for this or whatever the case may need to be.
Um, I saw that you're moving this born in, so that went well with this, so that you can have some concept of what you're asking for.
Yeah. So, yeah, I mean, it's really just informational. I don't know if you guys have any questions, just kind of uh. As a point of kind of an idea of what we could, what we could utilize in the city. Um. I think we could get a lot more done. Um, a part of this. I would, if I were to split it into two, I would say it's gaining a full-time employee for the General Public Works Department to do. Projects and just. Everything that needs to be done around here as well as the uh park portion. I think just with the, from what I've seen so far. Um, between uh Kemp Olsen Park and uh the boat launch as well as our pocket parks and all the mowing and weed eating we do during the summer. I think it could be entirely useful to have just a year-round. Uh. Part-time employee to take care of that stuff and do the garbage regularly and the boat launch restroom regularly. Just, I think that would be a part, year-round, part-time job in itself.
Since the first time I saw the budget in January twenty two. That's why everything I've been spending time doing has been for, we're. Woefully behind in in headcount.
Right.
There, I mean, we're where we brought headcount to be behind in headcount here as well. You know, we we were woefully behind the ability to support a full police department. So we're getting there. I hope the patience is there. I think that you're seeing the beginnings of that and that. In that council, you know, was prepared to offer, I think it was, I think we actually said. You could you could get eight months of three, three days a week of a part-time person, so that's a pretty healthy part-time person.
Right.
So we went from the year before not having any budget for that. To having that, so I see that, you know, and we haven't even built out, once Callis Meadows hits. We can start to.
Right.
Increasing.
We're already in February, get your ads out there, start finding someone. By the time you guys find someone. It's gonna be. December before the eight months is up and then we can start looking at the budget for twenty six and trying to fit them in for twelve months rather than.
Right.
Yeah.
And I didn't anticipate you guys would disagree with the whole lack of people. I just wanted to pr- present that for all.
You have. Having a superintendent. And I know that um. Our current employees. I don't know that you're qualified to be a superintendent. The uh, what's his name? I'm.
John.
John is not interested in being a superintendent. He's already voiced that. So where do we go from there?
I think that you're looking for a player-coach position that that is just a more senior, somebody more senior that can. Add management to also maybe to help with the tasks that need to get done.
Right, I just think.
Cause it's a very expensive.
I think they work really well together. John's got the experience, Jay's got, he likes the paperwork side, he likes the. The research side. I think we keep going forward. If it's not broke, don't fix it. Right now, I think they're just asking, I see what you're saying. Like the proper structure for it.
Yeah, well, if you're asking for a superintendent and an assistant. Then who's gonna be the superintendent?
He's not, though.
That's what it looks like.
My, he was, he was asking, I saw that that there was a need for another head.
Employment plan.
Yeah. Uh, then that's another head.
Right, I think uh Public Works Superintendent could be entirely useful to kind of orchestrate things. Uh, as far as which direction that goes, I don't know. I'm not entirely sure that John. Does fully decline that opportunity, I think. There may have been some misunderstanding there and.
Yeah, well, he has declined it. He's not comfortable with it. That's why I'm bringing it up now because if that's where we're headed. We need to address that.
Okay, I think.
We can address it. Yeah, another time.
Yeah, it sounds to me though like. You need to get some hard time out in there, so.
He's he's got it, so I think just moving forward, um, this is more informational. They're, the the more we grow, the more work they're gonna need.
Right.
I found some stuff from Gray and Osborne that just confirmed we're very understaffed for public works. You know, they're dumping trash, they're worth more than dumping trash, they can do more, so.
But it's, he still needs to get the ad in the paper to start finding somebody, so.
Um, I went through hiring for them last year and it um. I don't, I don't have that kinda time, so I think we've worked something out where I can list something for them, they can do the callbacks, they can do the interviews.
Cause they're intent to work with.
Exactly.
You know, we provided an ideal description. I don't know uh what steps we need to take for.
I was just waiting for it to get approved and then I can list it.
Is that something we can reach out to the temp people for as well?
They don't wanna use the temp agency.
Okay.
Or John said he doesn't, yeah, I don't know.
What about high schools?
I do.
There's work permits and all kinds of other stuff that goes with it, yeah.
Uh, yeah.
And we need someone with a driver's license and.
The timeframe also is a little bit.
Yeah, we need him during the day. We don't want him here after school.
Right, and it's, we're looking for May to September.
Yeah, so if one Sherry approves it, but why May to September if you're, we've got eight months.
Cause I believe that's what the budget counts.
No, we've got eight months.
I'm pretty sure we have a significant number of.
Yeah.
Hours.
Yeah, it's more than that. Yeah.
Okay.
That was just wages, probably. That doesn't get into like.
Wages, isn't that what hours are based off of?
Not really. There's a, there's a fully loaded cost.
Fully loaded cost and it's. It's like an expert.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, but I mean, if you've got eight months, then start looking now. Yeah, but I mean, if you've got eight months, then start looking now. You guys can start hiring someone and even still, we can always do a budget amendment.
I was aware that we had eight months.
I opened with twelve and then was told you didn't need that many.
Right, yeah, we did. We tried to get you someone for the full year and we were told.
I think we'd use twenty-four.
Yeah, so go ahead, Jake, I just need approval from Sherry if you want to resend that over. I can get it posted for you guys and we can start sending you guys resumes. This person works out fabulously, then come third quarter, we need to amend the budget. I'm sure we bring it to council and we'll look at it.
Okay, yeah, thank you, guys. Again, I just like presenting things and appreciate it.
He likes the PowerPoint. I'm like, and you do a wonderful job at it.
Thank you.
Alright, so we will move on to the unfinished business, which is ordinance eight-one-six. An ordinance of the City of Toledo, Washington, establishing a reduced water rate program for low-income residents. And providing for separability and establishing an effective date. This is the second read on this. It would entertain a motion.
I would be more than happy to do again, make a motion that they accept ordinance eight-one-six.
A second.
And moved by Eric and seconded by Rebecca. Is there any discussion on it? Let's go around.
I was wanting to make sure that there's nothing in here that is, uh, discretionary, right? You locked it down. I, I mean, I've read through it a couple times. I just wanted to make sure you went through it with, and that you went through it with the eyes. You know, we don't want it to be that, you know, we could choose not to. It's to be, you either qualify or you don't.
Yep, and the attorneys looked it over too. So we, um, we do have to send it out with billing. We have to offer it to everybody. And so I will come up with, um, with a form. We already kind of know, you know, we already have, have a, a good list. Of people we think are gonna qualify, um, we do have to post it on our website. It has to be made available, so I'll also post it out here. It's been, it goes published tomorrow, so we're good. Yeah, we just need people to start turning them in. We're obviously a couple months behind. I wanted to have them approved in December for January through December. And it'll be a yearly thing.
That's good to do, that's right.
Yep.
And, and are you listing what their requirements are in that application?
Any other discussion? Alright, we'll talk about all those in favor. Opposed? Perfect, motion carries. Alright, so we will move into other business, uh, which will be, we'll start with the oath of office.
We have a pick turn swearing.
I know, I'm like, hopefully this will be the last time I'm swearing at people in a while. That's all I've been doing. Do you have your coffee? Perfect. Come join me up here, sir.
Wherever you're comfortable, how about that?
I, Jake, solemnly swear affirm that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of a member of the City of Toledo Budget Advisory Board.
I, Jake Crowe, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of a member of the City of Toledo Budget Advisory Board.
To the best of my ability in accordance with the Constitution and laws of the United States.
To the best of my ability in accordance with the Constitution and laws of the United States.
The laws of the State of Washington and the ordinances and regulations of the City of Toledo.
The laws of the State of Washington and ordinances and regulations of the City of Toledo.
I will uphold and adhere to the principles of integrity, transparency and fairness in all budget advisory board activities and decisions.
I will uphold and adhere to the principles of integrity, transparency and fairness in all budget advisory board activities and decisions.
I will strive to promote the public welfare and act in the best interest of the City of Toledo.
I will strive to promote the public welfare and act in the best interest of the City of Toledo.
Welcome aboard again. He signs here, right? Alright, we'll let you sign. Okay, so moving down to the next order for other business, informational only is the park house contract. You ready, Jamie? Barter exchange. Fringe benefits, lodging still falls under a fringe benefit under the barter exchange contract. So it goes back to, it's still, um. The on-premise lodging, this is from the Department of Revenue, as long as it meets these three codes or stipulations. We don't have to do the ten ninety-nine B. It's still a barter exchange, but it says in here that it's.
It's a requirement, not a, not a benefit, or is that right? Cause we require them to live on.
Correct, cause in order for him to do the job, he has to live there. So we do not have to do the ten ninety-nine B. If it was any other thing else, it would fall under a barter. Exchange contract, but it's not because of the lodging. And so I updated the contract to meet the IRS terms. To make sure that we are covered if they were ever come back. And it's just, it's a fringe benefit, so.
I still disagree with you.
Everything's right. What do you mean? What do you mean disagrees?
Thank you for spending more time on it.
Yes.
Maybe next year I'll go ahead.
No. I'll call in sick then.
I may not be here to share.
Perfect. We will open up for any public inputs. Come up to the podium and state your name.
Uh, File Wheeler. Bert, would you get a letter about the chief last week? A letter of accommodation, sorry, didn't mean to scare you. I spoke to another fellow law enforcement officer last week and he had some very nice things to say about Chief Valentine.
I didn't.
Hold him to send it to Winlock Council and then also to you guys, cause you hold it and I just wanted to double check.
No, I didn't. If you have it, forward it to me.
I'm gonna message him tonight.
Yeah, he's been great to work with.
And that's where I was like, hey.
Yeah.
Those as well, deserves to have that over there.
Yeah, definitely.
Second thing there, um, touching on the conversation with Shane, you guys might consider part-time city manager rather than a superintendent. For a specific department, because a city manager could do part-time super stuff for every department rather than limiting it. That's something that just popped up. I was looking at where we might put a public parking sign the other day. And I noticed that the Third Street intersection is very limited in view already. I looked at old street views and it used to have a sign that said, do not block intersection. And then at some point it changed over to the big metal fish that's there, um, so I don't know if that, it sort of touches into the next part, which was. I talked to you previously about trying to clarify the ownership of the old jail and making sure that it is or is not ours. Because we put a lot of work and love into it, um, but I think that that's.
And I will double check, cause I know there's been multiple different, I've been told multiple different things, one that it was gifted to the city. And another one that it was gifted to common grounds. So that is an, uh, email I can send tonight to Brian.
And that's, that's sort of what I, my, my archer at that is, I'm just trying to make sure that the cool things that people have done, like the city jail and steamboats. Cool metal thing moves that level of, folks put a little love into that and I just want to make sure there's a level of it's protected this time. Um, I know there was a mural issue a couple of years ago. Just trying to. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You know, one of the things I was thinking since I, since I kind of heard about that Third Street. Um, and just parking is making it a right turn.
That's what I was gonna say.
Because it's the left turn out of there or trying to go straight across, that's crazy.
Yeah, it should be a right turn only out of there. Either that or we need one of those weird stupid mirrors, fisheye mirrors, but even not, it degrades over time.
Yeah.
And I, I might, I, I'm hesitant to say it, but there's a, um, all those yard right there is. At a what sixty-degree angle where it's like, I understand that it's hard to maintain it, but if it is we back a little bit, that might clear up an extra foot.
Yeah, and, and there's no way, there's almost no way to walk there. I guess you could cross here and go up and then, then trap across the grass. But other than that, you're not getting there. We'll get there.
But the old city records show that, um, that property was given to the city like years and years and years ago.
So we would need to find a deed. Yeah. Or it didn't happen.
Yeah, that may be the thing other than just perbling the records. Um, second question, do, does the city, uh, have they adopted a complete streets ordinance?
Or what?
You know, that's what it's called, a complete streets ordinance, and it just covers everything that you might want. Have done to your streets, like you have a problem with this, it identifies.
I think that would be the five-year TIB plan or the ten-year.
TIB, yeah, it is. Um, but a lot of the grants now say you must have a complete streets. Plan in place to qualify for grants, like safe streets, which is sidewalks there. Or if you wanted, um, uh, a crosswalk.
That's the ten-year plan.
That sounds like it.
Well, that's actually not what happened. Uh, and we had discussions with the state when I, they were out at the stop sign. They were offering, uh, possible grants for the city to. Um, actually plan their complete street program. Because they also indicated they felt that you would want to eventually reconfigure. Coming down the hill and turning left and going through the main part of town. And until you have that complete street program, you are not eligible for grants. That will allow you to actually do some of those. A lot of those grants are matching funds, more participatory funds. Which is where impact fees for trafficking, things like that, for traffic coming in flood. Um, but we do not as yet, as far as I know, from the planning commission's side, have a complete street program.
We'll definitely dig into that and what else did you have for us?
Cause there's quite a team now, right now, that don't have matching. I don't look at anything that takes money out of the city unless it's unusual circumstances. Um, but they are all, everything now, county, uh, state, um, federal are all reimbursement grants. It's the only way you can get them from what I can tell, so, um, real quick and this probably goes more into Todd too. Is, um, I was here when you were doing that discussion on annexation. About that and she was saying, well, something about forty thousand dollars at this point, but it would take a lot more. And right now there is a grant through, um, the O-nine fund and it only. The cities are the, and government can, are the only ones that can apply for that. Um, it's up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, you would need the match, and not a match, but you would need to have the funds to get reimbursement.
And that is something we'll, we'll definitely need you to take to the grant committee, because they'll need to be.
Much time, that's why I'm bringing it up now. So I, if you want me to look at doing it, I can do, it's really a fast grant.
Yeah, just send it to me, cause I know we just got a hundred and fifty thousand, so, or a hundred, a hundred thousand.
I do believe it was emailed. I think you emailed the information.
A little bit, yeah.
On the O-nine one?
Yeah, on the O-nine, um, and it has to be in by the twenty-second. And there is a follow-through with that, which is March seventh, so you would get the money before the comp plan, so you could use that. Do you need it for then?
Uh, we're just working on our. Comp plan, yeah, just working on our comp plan with Todd, so looking at zoning and drafting the ordinances and.
Hmm, yeah. Would that be considered permitting and land use? Cause that is one of the things you can use for that O-nine and it's local, it's just the board here, so.
So, yeah, if you want to follow up with, with Rachel on that by email, that would be perfect.
Okay, sounds good.
Alright, perfect.
Covered everything.
Thank you very much. So any other public input tonight? Alright, no executive session, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
By Eric and seconded by Jamie, all those in favor? Opposed? Okay, meeting adjourned.